Call your attention to the beginning of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners January 7th, 2019 meeting. This time we'll have Commissioner Larry Yoder do our invocation.
So Stan. Let us pray. Our county most gracious heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity you've given us that we're able to meet like this in a free country, in a free world. Lord, we'd ask that you have your blessings upon our emergency personnel, have it with our military personnel, both home and abroad. Lord, we'd ask that you be with our leaders in Washington to help them come to some type of decision to put our federal people back to work. We'd ask you to take care of us, to look after us, help us that we would make the decisions that we need to make for this county in a way that they are just and fine for the people of this county. We ask all these things in thy name. Amen.
If you would please, join me in the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Any commissioners have a report? If not so, we have a motion to adopt our agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
This time we'll entertain anyone who has signed up for public comment, which no one has signed up. And moving along, we have a public hearing on the approval of road names, Red Arrow Drive, and a petition to rename Baker Poultry Lane to Ritchie Farm Lane. Do I have a motion to open such public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise, motion passes. We'll now turn it over to Mr. French to share the information regarding the approval of the roads.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff requests the approval of the road names as listed in your packet. The names meet regulations as required. Names have been checked for duplication, sound indexing. Red Arrow Drive, which is off Macedonia Church Road, would be one of the changes, and the second would be Baker, changing Baker Poultry Lane to Ritchie Farm Lane, and we have received a petition for that renaming.
You've heard the proposal regarding this, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, I guess anyone have anything they'd like to say before we do? Okay, have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. And you've heard the proposal, any, no comment? Any comments?
Sounds good to me.
We have a motion to approve such changes?
Make a motion to approve the road names as stated.
Second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise, motion passes. This time we have a special guest with us this evening. I'd like to welcome Mr. Gordon Palmer, well, not new anymore, but our new principal at Alexander Central High School, who's going to share some exciting news with us tonight, and it's just an honor to have him come speak with us, and he has some folks with him, and we'll let him introduce anybody he has with him. But Mr. Palmer, thank you for sharing, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to be here and speak to you tonight. I'm Gordon Palmer, Principal at Alexander Central. I've got a great team with me of administration, teachers, and students, and we really just want to share. I know sometimes commissioners don't always get to see great positive things brought to them, but this is something definitely that is going to be great for our community, great for our school, and we're just really excited to share it with everybody. So what we have, and I will introduce my team and have them come up here in just a minute, but what we have is a program called Dream On 3. It is a 501(c)(3), similar to Make-A-Wish, but what this program does is they expand it beyond terminally ill students. It is for students that have any type of disability, that could be life-altering, life-changing, a life-changing event that takes place in their lives, and they want to create a dream experience for them where they're focused primarily around sports. That is what their connections are with, and that's what they produce for their recipients. So their vision and what they do is Dream On 3 brings sports dreams to life for qualified children by creating personal experiences with their favorite athletes, sporting event, or sports team. Their vision is to unite communities in promoting the dreams of our children. I want to stop there for a second in saying that they do more than provide a dream come true for a student, they really unite an entire community and an entire school where the fellow students create a lot of the planning that goes into providing this to their fellow classmate. It is similar to Make-A-Wish, like I had stated, but it is a different candidate pool and focused on sports. And later in the presentation, we will show you a video that explains all of what Dream On 3 does. I could stand here and explain it to you all day, but the video will really impact you more than anything I could ever explain to you. So what have we done recently? Recently, we identified a candidate. We saw a student at our school that is beyond deserving of this recognition and being a recipient. So we completed an application, we met with their directors, and we formed a team to make this come true. So tonight, we have Brian Lewis, who is one of our assistant principals, we have Chris and Amanda Marshall, who are two of our EC teachers, we have Abby and Casey, who are amazing students at the school and part of the junior dream team, which we'll explain in just a second, and we have 12 other students, not here today, but we have 12 students in total that will be our junior dream team for this event. And typically, Dream On 3, they start this process in August and September, and they select their candidates, and that's it. We really didn't start this process until, I would say, less than a month ago, but we found a student that deserves this so much that we contacted them and said, "Listen, I know your plate's full, but we've got to do this. We've got to make this happen for this young man. He's a senior this year, and this will be our last opportunity to make this come true for him, so come out and let's talk." And we did that, and they heard our story, they heard about our student, our recipient, and they were blown away. And then the great thing that we have at Alexander Central that we use to our favor is they were on the fence a little bit, and then we sent them a video of our baby Cougars saying, "We're ready for this." And they went from on the fence to 100%, "We're all in, we're going to do this, we're going to make it happen." So definitely a round of applause for our baby Cougars to help influence this program. So what it will be is, it'll be a surprise to the recipient. They won't know where they're going, they won't know what they're doing, they'll know that there's some type of an event. And what the school does is we have a big send-off. So the student may go to the Super Bowl, the student may go to the Daytona 500, the student may go to wherever it is that their interest is. We make it happen, Dream On 3 takes care of the logistics, we have a huge send-off, and then we have events leading up to the send-off that gets our entire school involved, and it gets our entire community involved in helping make this happen. So our responsibility is to plan and perform the send-off, and we'll fundraise, but the great thing about Dream On 3 is that it doesn't matter if we raise $500 or $50,000, they will make sure that this happens for this individual. So like I said, beyond just making this happen for our student, it'll affect our entire school, and it'll really affect our junior dream team that puts this together. And these 12 students are, they have a servant's heart, they have passion to give back to their fellow classmates, and they will plan, they will get leadership skills, and I'm going to have us play this video real quick to give a description of what this junior dream team is all about and the benefits of the junior dream team.
What is the purpose of a junior dream team?
The junior dream team is a program that works directly through high school to empower student leaders to make a dream come true for one of their own classmates with special needs.
Typically, we have eight students come together, working as a unit, from learning about social responsibility, to planning, to social media for business, to getting their student body on board and excited about the project and getting behind one of their own.
How are members of a junior dream team affected or impacted by this experience?
We've had students come to the realization that they have a gift for servant leadership.
It also helps them understand what it means to be empathetic towards people who have particular needs in their lives.
It makes them into better leaders. I've seen it change career paths and things that they want to do with their lives.
How does a junior dream team impact the school?
What I really saw happen was just kindness, in that people really started to understand that just because someone looks different than you and acts different than you, then that doesn't mean that they are less than you.
They changed the culture of the school by just really being thoughtful and mindful of the person that they're planning for.
What would you say to schools who are considering becoming a junior dream team school?
You will see impact on the students in your school and on the faculty in your school.
This is a chance to teach students to be leaders. It is a chance to say to students, "You can give back to the community. We have an opportunity to educate our students in something that's outside of the classroom. It's beyond math and English, it is life skills, and what an opportunity, don't miss it."
For more information about our junior dream team program, go to dreamon3.org. We would love to have you in the huddle.
One, two, three, dream!
So our junior dream team will plan the whole event. It'll be life-changing for them, and they'll meet consistently, leading up to the event, at least once a week during our Smart Lunch. The Dream On 3 program directors, they'll come out and meet with them to make sure that they're on time and on task and set deadlines, and they'll create T-shirts and events at the school and different things of that nature to make this happen. So the next video I wanted to show you is, I had the privilege last year of putting on a Dream On 3 event at my former school for an individual who was just like the one we're going to talk to you about later at Alexander Central, who was extremely deserving, and his dream was, he loved NASCAR and wanted to go to NASCAR, and this event is, they think huge, they think big. If you look at their website, they had Christian from Northwest Cabarrus, who, he was a Yankees fan, and they got him to a Yankees game, they landed a helicopter on the football field, and that's how he left to go to a Yankees game. Tyler, you'll see in the video, we put him on a private jet, sent him to the Daytona 500, and he met everyone. So like I said, I could tell you all night long, but you got to see it for yourself.
So we are at West Iron Hill High School, getting ready to do Tyler's VIP send-off. He doesn't know it today, but he's coming to here to learn from his fellow classmates and his dreams coming true. He'll be in Daytona by this afternoon.
In here, enjoying the same time as we are in here.
All of your friends here at West Iron Hill High School are working hard to send you on a huge dream that starts today. As soon as this sentence is over, you are flying to Daytona for the Daytona 500, where we get to all.
The students erupted. They want to support Tyler. He is Mr. West Iron Hill, he is the biggest warrior we have here. The way the junior dream team and Dream On 3 has impacted our school is it has really brought our school closer together.
I don't know if you know Tyler, but all these guys on this airplane, actually their job is to work on the race cars.
Well Tyler, we're super excited to take you to the racetrack today, and we know you're going to have a great time.
It was awesome. I love to fly.
We're here, Florida has left.
Have a good time, man.
Good to see you. How are you doing?
Why, I believe it's Houston. It isn't Dale Earnhardt Jr.?
Yes, sir.
I know it was you!
Yes, sir. That's right. You want to get a couple pictures?
Sure.
All right, good to see you.
My man. Here's the man I was looking for.
You doing all right? You doing okay, buddy?
Congratulations for that dual race.
Oh, thanks, yeah.
You always make me proud, I'll tell you that right now.
Thanks.
Good luck today, tomorrow's great.
Thanks, buddy. I appreciate it, it's great to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
We'll have fun down here, all right?
These guys make these airplanes go up in the air that you've been seeing before.
Whoa!
Hey, how you doing?
How you doing?
Good?
All right.
Buddy.
I'll let the nine hat slide, but you got to get like an idiot shirt or like something. We got to split it up.
This is Tyler.
How are you?
Good.
You like me in interviews? Why's that? Because I'm honest?
Yeah.
I say whatever I want?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
But you do look cute.
Tyler can come and race for me.
All right.
Yeah.
Did you hear that? I'm going to race for him.
I'll have to put in a good word for you.
Yep.
How are you?
Well, look who it is.
How are you?
My old pal.
Old pal.
I'll be, my old pal Jeff Gordon.
Great to see you. How you doing? I like that shirt.
Thank you.
It's bringing back some memories.
Thank you. I see you got 93 wins and four championships.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I love this man.
That was good.
It's been quite an experience, to say the least.
Seeing the look on Tyler's face when he got to meet Jeff Gordon, Dale Earnhardt Jr., Dan Kepach.
This is something that he's wanted to do his entire life, I mean, because he's loved NASCAR since he was just a small child, and I mean, to come here at this facility and meet the level of drivers that we've met, and I mean, the team owners, and they're also nice, their hospitality is just unreal, I mean, the NASCAR community is just, I mean, they are super good guys.
So you can see how great of a program this is, and some of the highlights from that, a private jet, a stretch limo, we had the band playing the whole time, and we had, some of the things you didn't see was all the students lined up when we got outside, and he was high-fiving every single student as he walked out of the gym. He got to stand in the winner's circle at the Xfinity Race with the team, meeting all the, of his favorite drivers, and just an excellent experience. So at this time, I want to call the rest of my team up so they can speak a little bit about our candidate that we've chosen. And we've got Casey and Abby, and I'm going to have Mr. Lewis speak. This, I don't think would have been possible without Mr. Lewis. He knows this student, and he, early in the year, when we were kind of getting to know each other and different, sharing different things that we did, when he saw this, he said, "We've got to do this." And he has not stopped until we got the directors out there and we got them on board, and so I'm going to have him talk, just let you guys, fill you guys in a little bit.
I'll tell you what, that never gets old, watching it. From the first time that I saw that, I kind of seen it on the news a little bit, but to actually see that and know that that's a possibility for one of our students who we care about a lot is just exciting, it gives me chill bumps to think about it. And not only the part that the recipient gets, but also the community piece of it bringing our school together, and I know we've had a lot of tragedy from recent students and graduates here in the last several months, and this is something that I think can help us mend and help bring a positive spin for our students and faculty members who are looking for something to kind of tie us all together and give us a common ground to look to do something really, really good. And focusing on this piece, knowing that this is an opportunity for us to do that is, I think is just amazing. So I'm going to turn it over to our students real quick, but they're going to tell you a little bit about our recipient, and he's just an outstanding and awesome young man, so.
Good evening. My name is Casey Gilbert, and I'm a senior at Alexander Central. I'd like to speak to you about one of my classmates, Davion Washington. Davion and I have went to school together since middle school, and every day since, he has been a ray of sunshine in my life and many others. Davion is one of the most kind-hearted men I've ever met in my life, and he stands in the front door every morning at the school, no matter if it's sunny and warm, or if it's raining and freezing cold, he waves and smiles to everyone to begin their school day, and even gives us a fist bump or a high five. Every time I've been in a room with Davion, he always comes over and gives me a hug, and he could change my day simply with that. If I'm having a bad day, that's something that has always changed, and he does it every single day. I always enjoy talking to him and being around him. Davion helps out in our school a lot with many things. I believe he is the most deserving candidate to Dream On 3. I want him to receive something so special to him for all of his love and kindness spread throughout our school. To me, being a part of this experience is very special. Davion truly deserves to be, take part in Dream On 3, and I will forever remember this and it will forever be in my heart, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Abby Dejarnette. I'm a sophomore at Alexander Central High School, and I would just like to start with, my family recently went on to Make-A-Wish for my brother who has special needs, and just moments like that where you can just go away from, you know, all the bad things, and just be with your family and the ones who love you and everyone who supports you is one of the best things that ever happened, and I would just love to pass it on to anyone and everyone in the whole world, but especially to Davion. He is so special, and it truly is a blessing to Alexander Central High School. He, like Casey said, even if it's raining, 20 degrees, or 70 degrees, or 80, he will always be at the door, holding it, telling everyone, "Good morning, thank you," just always carrying on a conversation. He is one of the sweetest souls I ever met, and I'm so blessed that God put him in my life, every single day to see his always smile face, and I like to say, "Just thank you for letting us be here, taking up your time, and thank you for everything you do."
Thank you.
Thank you. So in closing, we really just want to share how deserving this young man is. Like everyone has said, the thing that really stands out is every single day, he stands at that front door, and he greets every single student, every single staff member, every day, no matter the weather, and he's got a huge smile on his face, you cannot be in a bad mood around Davion. He gives you a fist bump, says, "I hope you have a great day." At the pep rally, when he came in, the place erupted, everybody loves him, and he's extremely passionate about sports. He sends out a weekly update on every single sporting event that is going to take place that weekend. So about Wednesday or Thursday, he sends out an update, here's everything that's going to happen sports-wise. And on Thursdays, I would ask him during the NFL season, "Who's playing tonight?" And he would tell me who's playing, I'd say, "Who do you think's going to win?" He was never wrong. It is, he's an amazing young man, we want to show how strong we are as a school, as a community, and we just wanted to share it with you so you can share it with the community. We will have fundraisers to support this, but we are not here asking for money, we are just here asking for any support you could provide and to really help spread the word. So thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any, I'm sorry, do you have any questions?
Just a very, very, very fine program. I think more of our kids that have special needs, we need to recognize them because they're very gifted. My wife taught special and gifted children for years at Alexander, and they're special, very, very special. Thank you all for what you're doing. That's going to mean a lot to a young man or a young lady now and in the future. Very, very fine job. Positive things that the youth of our county are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Lewis, Dr. Hefner, staff, students. We learn ABCs, 1, 2, 3, science facts, and all those things, but rarely do you get opportunity to learn life and to give back, and that really makes a difference. Thank you for what you're doing. This is pretty awesome. At this time, we'll have a presentation on our Senior Center. It's on Medicare savings in 2018. Ms. Christine Gates, the Senior Center Director, and Christie Hunt, Assistant Senior Center Director, are going to share with us a PowerPoint about information on Medicare savings throughout this past year. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you for having us, and we thank the commissioners for the support you've given us over the years and providing three great places for us to let the seniors come together and participate in different activities. We appreciate it. So I just want to read you our mission statement. The Alexander Senior Center is a county organization that provides a focal point for aging resources as well as opportunities to extend independent living and enrich the quality of life for older adults in Alexander County. As a friendly and vibrant activity center for seniors, we strive to be the remedy for loneliness and isolation.
If we go to here, we've got three locations. We have the main center in, I'm only going to talk briefly about this, but we have the main center in Taylorsville, right on Lyle Down, across from the Board of Education, and then we have a location in Bethlehem, which Christie runs two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then we have one in Stony Point that is open Monday mornings, and we have a volunteer that teaches a painting class and opens the center and runs it and closes it, and that works really well. They love the painting class, Christie's people that don't have to drive all the way to Taylorsville love the opportunity to be able to go there and participate in their activities, and then Taylorsville is centrally located, so we can have all kinds of people come here. All right, so Medicare, the Medicare savings. I think you can go to the next one? Okay, here's participation, we'll stick with this. So this is all centers' participation. The yellow line that you see there is the top line, but it's the top line on the graph, but it's the bottom line on the bottom for the numbers. Attendance has gone up, the average, the monthly average has gone up for all centers, and we keep growing. And if you go to the next one, that's Bethlehem, and again, Christie's Center. And again, Christie's Center, participation has gone up, all of her lines are up. And you guys can study those if you'd like. If you've got any questions, I can answer those. Okay, the next one? Okay, so here's, here's why we're here. So we have, um, we had a goal that County Manager French said, "If you guys can save a half a million dollars like you did last year, could you save a million dollars?" So we took the challenge. And so if you look at the bottom line right there, it says savings year-to-date. That's for the whole year of 2018. We saved 1.1 million dollars in Medicare savings. Now, I'm not sure. It, it's all broken down January to December. So in, um, for Medicare open enrollment, just the period from October fifteenth to December seventh, we didn't quite get the million dollars, but the year we did, we saved eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-five dollars for, just for open enrollment, which is more than we've ever saved before. I think our highest number before was five-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars during open enrollment. But we, we helped four-hundred-and-twenty-two unique people who came into the Senior Center save that eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars. Where all we did, there's no real secret, we use the Medicare.gov website. The public can access it. It's a little bit tricky. We get training quarterly and then we have an annual conference to navigate the simple, for the public to use, website. And, um, we, we help seniors with their best coverage. So their best coverage is gonna be the least amount of money out of pocket for them for the next year. So that October to December open enrollment period is their savings for the, for 2019. But we still saved it in eighteen. So as open enrollment closes and they start using their drug plans in January, they could save a thousand, two thousand, ten thousand, somebody saved a hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand. So if you look, if you look at, I'm gonna leave that there. We'll come, we'll come back to it. Within this hun- eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand during open enrollment, part of it is a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand in extra help applications. That's low-income subsidy, um, applications that Christie probably filled out. You are still back there, right?
I am.
Okay. And, um, so we calculate that with what the North Carolina Department of Insurance, that's who trains us, North Carolina Department of Insurance with the Seniors Health Insurance Information Program. And they have us calculate the savings for them would be six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixteen dollars over the course of the year. Because what extra help will do is it will pay their Medicare Part B premium and it will reduce the cost of their medicines to be either zero or as much as eight dollars. So it's, it's a great out-of-pocket savings for people who have low income. And that's a hundred-and-fifty percent of the federal poverty level. So that's part of that savings. In addition to the eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand that we saved during just open enrollment, October fifteenth to December seventh, we saved another two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand the rest of the year outside of open enrollment. So as people aged into Medicare and they are new to Medicare and they come in and go, "Oh, I heard something about a drug plan. Social Security Office in Hickory said to come talk to you guys," then we help them pick their drug plan. With, when we use the Medicare.gov website, we go in and we put in their demographic information. It kind of opens up a mini Medicare record on them and we get a drug list. They, they provide the, the medication list. Then they tell us which pharmacy they prefer and we put that in. So basically, the Medicare.gov website is using the ZIP code that they live in and what Part D plans, which drug plans are offered in that ZIP code. And in this county, we have twenty-eight plans. So twenty-eight plans are available to anybody. And then it will rank them from the lowest out-of-pocket to the most out-of-pocket. And we say, "Choose the one that's lowest out-of-pocket. You wouldn't wanna spend more money. It's gonna cover, it's gonna cover best, you're gonna spend less. And so you might save five hundred, a thousand, two, five thousand." And in your, you've got a list of like the detail sheet, like all the prices or what everybody saved. You can see, like, some of them are highlighted if they're like bigger savings over, I think seven thousand dollars is where I capped it. But there's, there's all kinds of savings in between two dollars and a hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars. In the past, we had never kept track of the savings outside of Medicare open enrollment. We've always done it for open enrollment, but we didn't even realize that we did two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand or even in the ballpark of two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand outside of open enrollment. So we were pretty excited to, to, to realize that, that savings. And mostly people, when they come in, they are so confused, they've gotten so much mail. If they're new to Medicare, they're overwhelmed by information from insurance companies for either, uh, a supplement plan or a Medicare Advantage Plan. They're not usually getting anything on the drug plan, so they don't even know where to go with that. So we help them decide where they wanna go and then we, we get them the best deal. It's not like we're really doing anything. It's the Medicare database. 'Cause the insurance companies have already turned all those pricings in for their company for all the medications that they're gonna cover at the pharmacy that they're gonna shop at. So we just bring it all together and kind of make sense of it for them and say, "Here's your cheapest plan." And we do that all, every day. Every, every day. We probably, for everybody in open enrollment, I'm sure we tell them when they, when they come and they pick up a sheet to fill out with all the information. When they drop that sheet back off, we tell them again, 'cause they ask. And then when they go, when we go over the plan with them to decide which one they're gonna pick, we explain it again. We're like a broken record, but, but they're so happy when they leave. They're like, "You make it so easy. Okay, all right, I feel good about this." Okay, so the best coverage is where we want everybody to be, where they're paying the least out-of-pocket for the best coverage. All right. So now, if we go to the next page, is there another one? Nope, it's, it's the one you guys have. This one. So if you go to the very la- or go to the very first page of this one. And you can see that one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars that somebody saved. I think it's a green column.
Green for cash.
Yes, green for cash. You see, all she spent was twenty-one dollars. All she's gonna spend out-of-pocket, she already had extra help. So she already had the subsidy. What happened there was we caught, um, a Medicare, I don't know if it's a glitch or what, but she had a plan that was no longer gonna be sold. So she didn't have a plan to roll over into. Her plan was ending and Medicare just put, put people into the next plan. Next plan, next plan, next plan, down the list, and then they would start over. And so this just so happened to be very detrimental for her. She took a met one medicine that was really expensive. Um, I, I don't know if we could, we, I don't know if we could've gotten her out of this plan, but we caught it and we reran it and when she came in, we like practically had a party for it. So instead of spending a hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, she's only gonna spend twenty-one dollars out-of-pocket. We just moved her into the right plan. And so as you can see, the highlighted ones are the larger savings. If you go to the very last page, there's all kinds of information right there, where I twisted the numbers all the way around. You see the eight-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-four, which is the cost savings for open enrollment. And next to it is the extra help applications. That's included in that. There was only twenty-nine thousand where people didn't move their plan. They thought, "Nah, I'll just stay where I am. It's been okay." They don't, they didn't wanna save that. But you can see that column and all, all the other pages, but it was only twenty-nine thousand. And we did our best. We would all make phone calls, we would try and explain it again just so they were really informed that they knew what they could save out-of-pocket. You just can't, you can't make everybody move. But the bottom line is, uh, one hundred, or a million, one-hundred-and-ten-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars is what we saved the seniors of Alexander County with their medication for the year. And the average savings is nineteen-hundred dollars. And that's... Does anybody have any questions? That's...
That's really good. I appreciate what y'all are doing and, you know, that's money that's staying in Alexander County.
Yeah, it's, that's not a tax credit or anything that, that comes back to them. It's just money that stays in their pocket.
That's right. Appreciate it. Sounds real good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, that's amazing that, to think that, you know, they're gonna have that kind of money that they would've had to have spent. Uh, we may need to get you guys to look at our health insurance when we bit it out. But that's, uh, that's quite a feat. We're appreciative of that and I know that everyone has to be really excited. It's, uh, that's worth celebrating.
And the Senior Center's done that since two thousand and six, since the drug plans went into effect. I know that, I think that was Scott that was there. And so it's, it just continues and we're gonna track the outside of Medicare open enrollment now. We did hire two extra people, uh, Medicare specialists, and, uh, they were very helpful. I don't, I don't know if we could've done it without it, with, without them and without her standing right there behind me, who's not gonna say anything. But she's a workhorse. And that's it. Thank you so very much.
Great job, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have our 2018 Board Audit Presentation by Martin Starnes and Associates. Um, they'll present our information in PowerPoint concerning our 2018 audit.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kelly Gooderham. I was the Senior Audit Accountant on the county's audit this year. Uh, first off, we'll go through the audit results. Um, we issued an unmodified opinion, um, which is basically, it's the cleanest opinion that we can offer. Um, it just basically means that there were no material misstatements found that would mislead, um, a reader of your financial statements. In addition, um, special thanks to cooperative staff. Jennifer and Linda, um, are very, very helpful. They work diligently, hard, um, throughout the year. We just wanna recognize how much we appreciate that, 'cause we often have a lot of requests and a lot of questions, so. The next couple of slides goes through your revenues within the general fund. The top three revenues, um, the first one is your property tax revenues at fifty-three percent, your local option sales tax at twenty-three percent, and then your restricted intergovernmental revenues at eleven percent. The remaining two percent are, um, investment earnings, other taxes and licenses, and miscellaneous So for your ad valorem tax revenues, um, they increased approximately a hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, which is a little less than one percent, which is fairly comparable to the prior year. Next is your local option sales tax, um, which increased approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand or four percent, which was primarily due to the Article forty and forty-four sales tax revenue. And stop me if you guys have any questions. Next is your restricted intergovernmental revenues, which actually saw a decrease of nine-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand or eighteen percent, which is actually just because the state, um, took over administering the child daycare program. Um, so you're gonna see a similar decrease in your expenditures in a couple of slides. Next are the expenditures, the top three expenditures within the general fund. First, we have public safety at thirty percent, human services at twenty-five percent, and education at eighteen percent. Public safety, um, includes your sheriff's office, your detention center, your fire protection, emergency communications inspections, and emergency medical. Saw an increase of seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand or a little less than eight percent, um, primarily due to capital outlay purchases that were larger than the previous year. Next is your human services, which includes your health department, your DSS, and your senior center. Um, and like I mentioned previously, there's a, a major decrease, uh, in expenditures of approximately one million dollars because of the child daycare program being taken over by, um, the state. And then we have education, um, which actually only decreased approximately ninety-three-thousand, um, which is within one to two percent and fairly comparable. The next slide talks about the general fund debt. Principal payments for the general fund in fiscal year eighteen was around one-point-five-million dollars with interest expense paid of two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand. The outstanding balance of the six-point-eight million comprises approximately one-point-five-million in education and five-point-three-million in public safety, um, with debt payoff years of twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-six. This is just a pretty standard fund balance, um, depiction of what the five classifications, standard classifications for fund balance are. You have your non-spendable, which is not in cash form, like inventory and prepaid's. Um, your restricted, which is an external restriction, and then your internal constraints of committed and assigned. The next one is a calculation that the LGC uses just to kind of compare, um, different municipalities and counties across the state. It's your available fund balance, which is calculated with your total fund balance less your non-spendable, less your stabilization by state statute. Uh, continuing with audit results, um, there was a decrease in your general fund fund balance of around a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand. And likewise, your available fund balance percentage, um, as a percentage of total general fund expenditures and transfers out, was around thirty-one percent, which, um, according to LGC recommendations, um, equates to roughly three to four months' worth of expenditures. And for a comparison between fiscal year eighteen and seventeen, um, your available fund balance for, uh, fiscal year eighteen was, um, twelve-point-one-million, as opposed to last year, um, at twelve-point-nine-million, which was an overall decrease of around eight-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, which was primarily due to an overall increase in your prepaid's.
Can you, well, never mind. We'll get it in a minute.
Okay. Um, next is your solid waste fund. Uh, cash from operations was around thirty-eight-hundred dollars. Your budgetary net income, um, ended at around eighty-eight thousand. Um, and in addition, your budgetary net income does not include your depreciation expense. It only includes your cash items. So this slide just kinda gives you an overview of your unrestricted net position and how we, uh, calculate that. Your total net position for the solid waste fund, uh, at the end of fiscal year eighteen was, um, a negative thirty-eight thousand roughly. And you take that, uh, less your net investment capital assets to arrive at your negative eight-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand unrestricted net position within the solid waste fund. The next couple of slides talks about your water funds over, um, overview. For Bethlehem Water, cash from operations was six-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand and county water and sewer was five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand. Budgetary net income for Bethlehem Water was around four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand and your county water and sewer was three-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand. um, and your county water and sewer was three hundred and forty-four thousand. Similar to the solid waste net position slide, this just kinda depicts how, um, your total net position and then your net investment in capital assets to arrive at your unrestricted net position. So Bethlehem Water, um, total net position was five point nine million. Um, you add, or you subtract, sorry, um, your net investment in capital assets to arrive at your unrestricted net position of two point two million. Um, your county water and sewer, uh, ending unrestricted net position was one point nine million. Next is your water funds debt. The Bethlehem Water Fund actually paid off the last piece of debt, so there's no outstanding balance, um, as of six thirty eighteen. Whereas for county water and sewer, the outstanding balance was four point seven million. Principal and interest payments, uh, was a little over one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, um, for Bethlehem Water, and then a little less than four hundred thousand for county water and sewer, um, for principal and interest. Are there any questions? Hopefully not difficult.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just the kind of overview. I've been through several of these, but without really all the numbers and logistics. So it looks like it was good. You said there was no, it was a, no modifications requested. Everything is good as far as your...
Yes, um, when we issue the unmodified opinion, that's basically saying we didn't find any issues. So, yeah, it was a clean opinion.
All right. Well, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
On the fund balance position, general fund slide, it's, uh, twelve million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, ninety-seven, and available fund balance in a decrease, and you said that was due to...
Uh, it was primarily due to an increase in your prepaid's. Um, because we subtract your prepaid's to arrive at your overall, um, available fund balance. That's why, that was the primary reason that I equated to.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, one question. Uh, so the education spending went down about ninety thousand dollars, I believe you said.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what was that due to?
Um, it was comparable. It was within one to two percent. So I actually don't have that information in front of me, but I can get it to you.
Was that the auditor... Uh, Ms. French, you were... Auditorium? Yeah, okay. Auditorium being paid off?
Paid off.
Or our part of it was paid off? Okay, thank you.
Because that deal was a hundred and fifty thousand we paid each year.
Yeah.
Well, actually, our funding went up last year, really, in what we paid for education. Yeah, we maintained where we were, so we really didn't, we didn't cut it, yeah.
The auditorium payment was considered a part of that education piece, and is that correct, Jennifer?
Yes, the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar per year auditorium reimbursement payment, it ended, um, in fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, so that came off. The reason, though, that we have a ninety thousand dollar difference is what we added in fiscal year eighteen is we had a special funding of forty thousand dollars for the Twenty-First Century Program at Taylor's Elementary. So the net of those two caused that ninety thousand dollar decrease.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Makes perfect sense.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's always great to have a, a good audit, and congratulations to Ms. Herman and her staff and all the folks who have worked. Uh, would like to caution... An audit's kinda like a reconciliation of your checkbook. You know, it's a snapshot at that very moment in time, but you got monies coming in and monies coming out, and we're in a new budget now, and other projects have been taken on, so that, that number doesn't stay the same. Uh, you know, numbers go up and down depending on revenues and expenditures, but at that point in time, that's what it was, and it was a very, uh, very good audit, so we're thankful for that. At this time, we'll entertain, uh, from Doug Chapman of McGill, uh, sharing with us about, uh...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, we need to approve the audit as presented.
You're right. We do. We've heard the audit. Do you have a motion to approve the audit?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the audit as presented.
Second. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approve the audit, please raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
Please. Um, uh, the time that's involved in developing the numbers for the audit, um, i- it's just unbelievable. I can tell you firsthand, we have a number of finance staff that work on weekends, do all that's, you know, all that's required, and then some, and then some more. Uh, Jennifer Herman and Linda primarily do a lot of that work, and it would be remiss not to mention that. I mean, the effort is just excellent. It has long ways to go towards our fine audit that we have, so I just wanna point that out.
Absolutely. Things don't, good things don't happen by accident, and we very much appreciate all the hard work and effort that's gone into that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chapman from McGill is gonna share with us a presentation, information on our two thousand and eighteen water system extension project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Uh, we're excited to talk, give you an update on the water project that we're doing, the two thousand and eighteen extension project. I wanted to begin with going back and giving you a little bit of history. Back in two thousand and five and six, uh, McGill Associates did a water study modeling for the county, looking at areas where the water system needed some improvements and some extensions in the service areas. Uh, that map, and I know it's a small map, but, but that was the map from the study that we did, the presentation we did back then, looked at, uh, providing some looping, some networking within the one twenty-seven, sixty-four ninety, Church Road, Tig Town, those areas and those corridors, as well as providing water to the northeast portion of the county. Then I look at, uh, some projects that were considered and looked at when the federal government offered the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, uh, in two thousand and nine. The county embarked on several projects then, trying to capture some of those funds, and that sort of leads to where we're at today. Uh, a number of those projects, it's kinda hard to see on, on the big map, but a number of those projects on this map in green were projects that were on those previous studies and evaluations that have been completed. The county's done a lot to put in main water lines over the last ten to fifteen years. And you see the current project, the lines that are shown in red, those are lines that were identified through pieces of those different studies and efforts. That's why I wanted to give you a little bit of history about where we were, looking at where we're going. If you look more specific, you could see this current project has water lines along Zeb Watts Road, Ned Herman Road, Liberty Grove Church Road, Dula Loop, uh, just off of Highway ninety. And not only does this water, these lines provide water to the customers on those roads, it also provides further water supply to the Sugarloaf area. It's kinda hard to see on this map, but the water now in Sugarloaf that's in the county system that goes out to the Little River Tank and Pump Station, uh, goes along Three Forks Church Road, uh, right off of, uh, Main Street, and then goes up to Piney Grove before it gets over to Walker Foundry. So this will provide a little bit more feed into that area to help provide more water supply. You look at the next portion of the project, is an area that was identified, uh, a number of years ago, off of Rank Damn Road, uh, on Polly Bowman Road. It includes Deal Farm Lane, Kirk Patrick Lane, and Espy Little Road. We tried to capture all of the streets in there that were state-maintained streets. And, and as we looked at that area, we also looked at a lot of areas along the lake to see areas where water service was missing. Uh, another section that you can sort of see, uh, in that area is off Rank Damn Road is B and T Lane, where we're picking up more customers. And then you look, we did connections through pieces of Tig Town, which has a variety of waterline segments along it, uh, but they go out and stop. Several of those have been extended just in the last few months and in, in the last couple of years. So we're connecting those pieces, connecting the dots to provide looping, uh, around the mountain and within different areas along the main highway corridors in the county, or at least the, what I'll call a central portion of the county. So there's three segments along Tig Town Road. There's a, a segment, a piece missing, uh, over on Ikerd Ridge Road near the middle school. So it's going, this, this project provides water in a lot of different places scattered around the county, uh, that have been identified over a number of years of needing water. So we're going, this project's being funded by, uh, a loan from North Carolina Division Water, Water Infrastructure. So that, that is a process. Uh, those that recall different projects that we've done, uh, when we did the Bethlehem Ellendale Water Project and a couple of others that go through that process, it's about a two-and-a-half to a three-year process, and we're probably about halfway through that. So we look at that, uh, the designs have all been completed. They've been submitted, uh, I think, or end of October for permits. We're in the process of getting the state's approval and the permitting approval through that, uh, through those different pieces. We expect we'll have all those approvals by the, uh, by the beginning of March. Uh, there's a few easements that we have to get. There are not many, but where we're doing some creek crossings, where we have to get outside the regular road right-of-way to get around culverts or to make, uh, boar and jacks to get under the different sections of road. Uh, that'll take from about the middle of February till the middle of April. Then we'll be ready to advertise for bids, and we'll put that project out to bid for about five to six weeks. There's different steps that we have to go through because of the funding that's available. Uh, we expect that in late May, we'll have a bid opening. Uh, we would bring the bids back to the commissioners in June at one of your commissioner meetings for award of the bids. That'll give us some time in July to, to execute construction contracts with the contractor, with the county, schedule a pre-construction meeting the beginning of August, and then start construction, uh, in August, September timeframe for about a ten-month construction project, to get all those different pieces tied up through the fall and the beginning part of, uh, twenty twenty. And that would, uh, that allows us to get that project finished in twenty twenty and probably start payments somewhere around, uh, late twenty or twenty-one, uh, in that frame, because the payments on these projects start once the project's closed out. So just to give you some of the numbers, there are a total of about three hundred cus, potential customers along these routes. Uh, many of those are residential. Uh, as you can imagine, the project cost, we've estimated, uh, on the conservative side is just a little under five point seven million dollars. Uh, the loan that the county had, uh, county has is a little under five million, and that's a one point nine, one percent interest over twenty-year payment. And we have projected that there'll be a little over seventy-one thousand feet of water lines along this route. Now, right now, the connection fees that citizens would pay if they connect to the water system is, and you see the numbers here, uh, that adds up to a total of just over twenty-two hundred dollars that a customer pays. A portion of that is a meter charge and a capacity charge. A portion of those charges go to the City of Hickory, and a portion of that, uh, comes to Alexander County. Really, that's a lot of information, sort of quick. I'll throw that out at you. The next thing that I would say is, is what's next for the county? Start thinking about, you know, these projects, or if they're two, three-year projects, you may wanna start thinking about the things that are coming next. Uh, we have changed a lot of the hydraulics in the water system. It may be time to look at updating hydraulic model, uh, look at what service areas that you wanna pursue. Uh, I know the county didn't run Alexander County Water into the northeast area. That was done by, in partnership between the county and Energy United. Uh, but there are other areas, uh, most of the eastern area is covered and the central area, but there are still portions on the northwest and other areas within the service area that you have that to look at, where you may wanna think about the next phases of water, uh, as we look five, ten, fifteen years down the road.
I just, uh, one question here. I'm just now trying to get caught up on it. I remember we started this program to get this water for all these folks, okay? I served on here, uh, with all the board commissioners at that time. Uh, Tig Town Road, will that give us a complete line through Tig Town Road that will help increase the pressure, make everything equalized, and give better? Because I know we talked about that a long time ago, and I'm just catching up.
It will be complete all the way through Tig Town Road. Now, there are two separate pressure zones that the county works in now. There's the Bethlehem Ellendale Pressure Zone, and that's basically everything north of Rank Damn Road. And right now, it is split, uh, trying to think how to explain, about where Bowman Cut Over and the convenience side is on Tig Town. That's, the convenience side's the best place to say. Somewhere in that area is where it's split. Then you have a pressure zone that's on the Fairground Water Tank, and that basically covers everything on Sixteenth South. So there's, there's going to be water all the way through Tig Town, but there will still be a place where it's separated. But it all, but it will give us, because of all the network of lines that now exist on Sixteenth South, it will give us more water on that south end in the Whittenburg area that, that we didn't have when you look back fifteen years ago, when water didn't even make it all the way through Rank Damn Road. 'Cause that was some of the first projects that we did, was, was connecting some of those pieces along the way.
I know one of the big things that we talked about was, you know, getting these lines connected and get that loop, get these main roads done, and, and also get, uh, you know, some of these, uh, daddy-in lines tied in. So, uh, I'm glad to see that that's finally happening. And, uh, we owe, uh, County Manager Rick French, I know he's put a lot of time and effort into this as well, so wanna publicly thank you for your efforts, and, uh, uh, he's, he's done a lot to make water happen in Alexander County, and so's Larry Yoder and some of the other commissioners that are no longer here, so.
Spent a long time coming.
Yeah.
Good job.
Group effort.
Group effort by a lot of people, that's really involved Energy United, City of Hickory, Alexander County, and everybody who's worked together to try to provide the very best service for the county that they can. So it's worked out real well.
And I have to say, uh, you were talking about the, uh, water capacity and, and TAP fees, uh, for this was right around twenty-two hundred dollars. Well, I bought one the other day in Conover. It's the City of Hickory, outside the city limits, same price. So basically the same price, twenty-two hundred dollars, so we're right in line with everybody else. I think it's too high, but anyway.
Yeah, it's good projects. We're, and I think as commissioners, we need to continue looking down the road, you know, to make sure we're staying, you know, kind of ahead of the curve on this. And like I say, I just appreciate what our county manager's done, other commissioners, and commissioners in the past. You know, you gotta be looking, takes a while for these wheels to keep turning, so. And you can see we're looking at water and sewer now, so we've got some of those projects we're gonna be starting, so we're trying to catch up, so we appreciate what you do for us.
Yes, and definitely appreciate it, and people hopefully realize the benefits of the enormity of this project, but also that it, that it costs and, you know, provides a lot of, um, service to our county, but, uh, there's a lot of money and a lot of planning and a lot of timing, and it doesn't happen tomorrow. You know, just this piece here is what, a couple, been in the works for...
Just two thousand and nine, I know.
Ten years.
And then before that.
Another year and a half before it lifts, so, you know, that, that wheel turns slowly, but thankfully it's turning, and I appreciate all the hard work, and thank you for the good report. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may pick up on something that several of you gentlemen stated, it has taken them quite some time to get to where we are. And it's been a lot of Commissioners having faith and investing money, and that's what we have. We've invested money in water and we're getting ready to invest some money in sewer too. And I think all those will help our county grow and become a safer place. But Commissioners are the ones that make those decisions. And, you know, back when boards in the late, in the early 2000s and on forward and everybody on here pretty much has been a part of that. Darrell Robertson, who's here tonight, he's our engineer, he's, as a Commissioner, has, was very instrumental in it. But you had other folks that were very instrumental in it and wanted to see water to help our county grow. And so we're, we're getting there. We still have a lot more work to do, but we're getting there. So we appreciate your support in these endeavors for water.
And I'll just add one more thing. I know it's not a problem today. We're having the exact opposite of that problem, but back in, you know, the early to mid 2000s, we had quite a few years where we had droughts and people's wells were drying up and they didn't have water, especially in the northeastern section of the county, did not have water for chicken houses or farming or whatever it may be. And when you get up and you turn the faucet on in the morning and the water comes out, it's a pretty nice thing to have. And I woke up this morning at 5:30 and turned the faucet on and no water. And the pump had went out in our subdivision, so they had to come down and do some work and in a couple hours they had it up and running. But it's tough when you got a couple kids and, you know, you don't, you don't have water. So at some point in time, we're going to be in another drought, another severe drought. And where we've ran these water lines, these people are going to hopefully have clean, reliable water.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
County Manager Rick French will now share with us Budget Ordinance Amendments Numbers 23 and 24.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment 23 is to increase the county local funding for the Stoney Point Elementary School wastewater project in order to pay the cost of the engineering report within the project budget fund. And Number 24 is to increase the general fund local match. That's those, that's those, at $1,750 for this project. Additional local funds from the county are needed to, in order to pay for the costs of the engineering report within the project. The county matching funds are from the new sales tax that can be used for economic development, public, public education and community college. But that's part of something that we knew when we started the process to, for the wastewater project for Stoney Point Elementary School, that we'd have to have that cost, so. But that's the only budget amendments we have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the explanation. Do we have a, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve. Budget Orders 23 and 24.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. French. Always items like this and other times when we have amendments, I know people think, oh my goodness, you got this amendment and that amendment, but everything's not predictable whenever you write a budget and, and things happen and you have to, you have to pay to ride the train. Mr. French will now share board appointments and reappointments with us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Western Piedmont Council of Government Region Eaging Advisory Committee appoint Judy Rayo for two years. Senior Senator Advisory Committee appoint Warren Holler, Judy Rayo, and Beth Patterson for three years. Planning and zoning commission reappoint Coy Reese for two years. Commissioner appointments appoint Jeff Peel to the Finance Committee and County Schools Relations Committee, Ronnie Reese to the Finance Committee, Agricultural Extension Advisory Committee, JCPC, and Voluntary Farmland Preservation Program Board, and Larry Yoder to the Western Piedmont Council of Government Policy Board.
Okay, Ronnie. Yeah. You guys are going to step up to the plate, guys.
You're retired.
By this list, I'm not.
Thank you, sir. You guys have heard the recommendation for appointments. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All raise your right hand in favor. I'll oppose likewise. Passes five to zero. You know, and that's, when you go down through there, picking it, picking it Ronnie, and we all have boards that we serve on, but then you look at, at Judy and Warren and Beth and Coy. We appreciate people who serve and, you know, the democratic principles of being of the people and by the people and for the people can't happen without the people. So we're very thankful for our citizens who are civic-minded and want to be involved and do things. So much appreciated for those folks who do that. At this time, we'll turn the program over to Mr. French for other business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention. One is, in your package, you have a copy of the budget calendar for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Also, we have talked about scheduling a work session for projects and, and some financial matters. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at your calendars for Monday, the 14th of January, or Thursday, the 17th at six, and we could meet at 6:00 PM possibly in the County Administration Building. I don't know if those dates will work, but if they, if we could either talk about it tonight or you could let us know soon so we can advertise. We will also need another work session in February. There's a lot of projects and things going on, so that's all I have, except for some things for closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Everyone's had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as, as stated.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, please raise your right hand. I'll oppose likewise. At this time, we will adjourn and according to the North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A 5 and 6 for contractual and personnel items only, and we will re-adjourn only to adjourn. Thank you.